If that doesn't work, I'm sending the sisters to say it. Walker Shannon. This has legs. You know, it is going to have. Believe yourself. Have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have a little call.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Here. Andrew? Present. Mr. Hankins?
Here.
Mr. Cho Walter?
Here.
Mr. Stun?
Here.
Second.
You should have received the events from last meeting. Your question and motion. Motion made. Second. In discussion, the questions on the name. All in favor of the motion, say a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Motion carried. You should have received a check of address reading. If you can receive that, please raise your hands. At this time, we have public comments. Remind you that this is a question asked. We have four minutes to stand, give your name, and let us know what your concerns are. Please remember to be respectful of the public at times. At this time, I have Mr. Keith Tingle.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am Keith Tingle, and I'm chairman of the Scott County Conservation District. And you have a reading coming up on the zoning landscaping and land use, and I'm just here for a reference, if needed, on that one.
Thank you. Mr. President.
I'm good there, Mayor. I love you so much.
Thank you. Are there any others that need to come counsel to the House on Chief? So, from a couple of comments I'd like to make before we start, I've got a comment. First of all, I want to thank Judge Covenant for allowing the council to use this facility. While we are making plans to renovate the city hall. Also, kind of nicely, the fire department, they're taking part in a string. Got the string, and we got Chief Thompson here. And we'll again, we'll thank the council for allowing us to do this. This is a very important step in order to invest in safety of our employees so that they are able to do their job. Also, at this time, we don't know if you talked a little bit about public progress, but I'll say my comments at that time. So, let's go with Council meeting reports. Oh, excuse me. At this time, we have the executive order upon equal pay for to the human rights mission. You should have seen, received the information. Motion made by Counselor Allen.
Second.
Second by Counselor Stone. Other questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise.
Say back this, I will say I'm saying from the call because these persons are all relative to that.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. The mics, do we actually get those to be on or?
No, they should be automatically on, but make sure you're projecting your voice directly into them. They are, you'll notice in the exact same mics that we have at City Hall.
Yeah, okay.
Probably in need of an upgrade according to the judge.
All right.
So, use your cooking force. At this time, we will have Council committee reports.
Tracy, help me come to that application.
We do have one, yes. Tim, are you here?
Looks like I'm ahead.
Job number two.
And I can help if you need.
Please.
So. So, the fire department, as you all know, well, I like to speak to the memory of fire writer Battalion Chief Jacobs, but they are hosting a rough walk of the title Johnny Jacobs Memorial Rough Walk.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, a rough term for this, I'll use speak on the event, but we have received all the information. It's a city round event, we got all the liability insurance waivers in mind, but I'll like to speak on the event.
Yeah, Captain Chris Logan's been working on this. Battalion Chief Johnny Jacobs, of course, passed away a few years ago. We're working on trying to figure out a way to memorialize him and just have a place for families to come and sit at Station 3. That's what we envision. This is a way to raise some funding for that. This isn't necessarily the same as like a 5K where we need a lot of streets shut down. There's really just going to be street crossings that we'll have to, that we'll have to have. We do have police, sheriffs, EMS. We're going to have units available to be able to help block the traffic, but as far as the intersections, I honestly don't have that with me now. Captain Logan's been working on that, but it's coordinated. It's just going to be basically a matter of when we get to intersections crossing the, crossing the streets.
Okay, I misspoke. You do have to push, and then you'll see a green light. So, if your light is lit up, it will pick up even a whisper, so do not, don't leave the light on if you're not speaking. Sorry.
So, this is a two-day event?
No, it's just, it's Saturday morning.
Motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and second. Are there any further discussion?
Yeah, just to clarify, it's from eight to two?
Yes.
And you're going to have law enforcement personnel available to, for help crossing the streets from that timeframe?
He's been coordinating with different agencies, so sheriff's department's involved, police is involved, fire department's involved. So, we're going to have emergency vehicles there to be able to stop the traffic right there, turn the lights on just so people can cross.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise.
And then, there's one more, and you'll recall that at the last meeting, Ms. Brenda came, came to ask for additional street closure for her car show. And so, you'll see in the application, she requests Main, Main to North Broadway to North Mulberry. And in response, we said there was some feedback from local businesses, downtown businesses struggling with the closure of, of the street so early. So, Lori Saunders, Tracy, and I have worked with her, and so you'll see her revised application with the proposed setup time of 4:00 P.M., which will be much more palatable for downtown businesses. The restaurants loved the event, but the other, the retail businesses struggled a little bit with that. So, it will, we'll have a street closure at four, the event will start at five, and go till eight, and then clean up, hopefully finish by 8:15. The only thing that we discussed is that we, in collaboration with Sergeant Payton at GPD, believe that any motion to approve this, this new application should just be contingent upon there being an officer allocated to that, that spot by Mulberry because they get big trucks coming through, and if they get too far, they can't turn around. So, everything's in line, though, in terms of. Because the one they submitted was not specific to Georgetown. So, contingent upon the revised certificate and, and that officer being at Mulberry, then everything's in line.
Make a motion that we accept contingent upon those, fulfilling those two needs.
Second.
Motion's made properly second. Are there further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say likewise. Okay, at this time, we will have Council committee reports.
All right. Police committee met on May the first. Started off talking about community mental health support officers. The program has been stacked to Georgetown Police.
To Georgetown Police Officers, as well as Corey Council. It's a grant that's been funded from the JAG program. They deal with the drug court, the Angel Program, and support for officers in the field and on scene. And they can respond to specifically overdose within 24 to 48 hours through the Angel Program. And it is a part of the Community Health Coalition. One of the good things that was reported is the overdose numbers are down this year so far. And one of the things that they are using is a mapping program to help out with the grant reporting that is required, as well as the grant information and information shared across all the important agencies that are involved with that. Next, we talked about the recruiting video and efforts. The chief did a fantastic job with the, his department did a fantastic job with the video. Great, really wonderful job. They're also going to be heading out to Midway University and Kentucky State University this fall. Correct me if I'm wrong, you are, have, looking at one officer and one recruit currently, is that correct?
To hire.
Yes. Okay. And then, get into more on that. They were sent out 150 flyers this spring and still waiting to see how those will reach out to the community and, and people looking for jobs. Also going to be reaching out to Georgetown College athletic teams, as well as fraternities and sororities, as well as having a potential Nexus program. It's a program based at Georgetown College where students have to attend so many events that they get credits for, and those credits go towards graduation. Let's see. One last big thing for the recruitment is the Ed Davis, Job Fair at the Ed Davis Learning Center on May 13th, from 10:00, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, we want to encourage anybody that is interested in joining the Police Department. More than happy to have you show up on the 13th. The Junior Citizens Police Academy is capped and is full at 25 participants, and they have started a reserve list. And one of these, Kim Vinegar, who also attended the meeting, said that potentially look at doing a separate Citizens Police Academy for those 18 to 30 years of age. So, we did like the sound of that. As far as staffing goes, the Police Department is currently 10 officers short. We are losing one officer here in the very near future that is transferring to another agency. Also Sergeant Gardner, who has been deployed, will be returning in the near future. Looking for two certified, two non-certified police officers. And Chief Allgood said that possibly by the end of May, be making officers for them, or making offers towards them, so. And Willow, do you want to take grant funding from there?
Sure. I'm also on the Police Committee, and feel free to jump in if I, like, it was quite correct on the grant funding. But in 2017, the Georgetown Police Department received a vote of grant, loans against, uh, what, loans?
Victims of Crime Act. Yep.
What's the A?
So, this one's vote the Victims of Crime Act. You're thinking of the Violence Against Women Act.
Yeah.
So, we have both of those right now.
All right. And we currently have two staff members that are being paid for by the grant, but the federal funding continues to decrease, and the paperwork continues to increase. And so, we're not going to apply for the grant this year. We're just going to maintain one full-time advocate, but we feel like with the, with the lessening of the administrative work, that position will be able to do probably as much work as the, as the two. Is that fairly accurate?
Yeah, we're reaching a point where our advocate, we, we have two full-time positions on our personnel ordinance. We have historically struggled to keep two full-time advocates within the department. We are funded right now at a level of about, I think, $54,000. And then, we contribute over $100,000 from the general fund to the program. So, we're contributing a significant amount, well beyond our 20% match, towards the program. But, but we're at a point where our advocate is spending 40% of her time on reporting and 60% of her time on actually serving Victims of Crime. So, that's not really the intent in, in housing a Victims Advocate. So, based on the numbers that Stacy has run, we would actually save about $30,000 and change to the general fund while we determine whether we can meet the need with that one advocate and without all of those cumbersome reporting requirements. We'll still track number of victims served and, and demographics and things like that. That will help us better serve the community, but we will not have to engage in that, in the grant programs, oops, essentially.
So, Tom, I went to a meeting last week with Mayor, and I know Tom's been involved in this, maybe some and some others, but Scott County Schools, we have an idea, and of course, Chief Police Darren Allred was there. We need help recruiting, and we have a long-range vision of getting high school students involved in law enforcement. And Scott County High School has a pathways program already established, but we wanted to meet with the superintendent to see whether or not we get this same program up at the CrossFit High School. And it doesn't seem like we can do it this year, but it looks to me like, Mayor, you can add your, your input on this, it looks to me like we will be able to have a superintendent's cooperation. And we have at least one, if not more, police officers that might be able to do some teaching enrichment. Is that correct, Chief?
They'll be, they'll teach at, at great cost.
Yeah, at great cost. So, we're, we're excited about that. We feel like if we can get Scott County students into a mindset of learning about law enforcement as career, it will be a good feeder system for us. So, that was, that was very productive meeting. As far as traffic goes, the Police Department, in conjunction with Scott County Schools, are going to start this program called Operation Stop Arm because we have too many people that are running around the buses and endangering our young people. And it will have an officer on a bus and patrol officers in the area, so we immediately, we'll have more immediate means to be able to catch the offenders, and that could possibly start taking place in the fall. And then body cameras, we talked about that. The policies are pretty much in place. It's something that is on our radar to do. It says that they've been submitted to the city attorney, and they're reviewed and might need some tweaking going forward, but a grant is being looked at to fund the body cameras, and that funding window opens July 1st. So, we still have that on our investigative look to see whether or not we can make that happen, not in this bledging season, but possibly the next. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Two other things I think we, we got out of that meeting was that we're working on, there's a gap between 18-year-olds and 20, 20-year-olds, and so, we're also looking at possibility that those students that are 18 and actually getting involved as one of our dispatchers and running that route and getting them involved there, and if, if they're good at it and we want to continue with that, they can also even apply to be a police officer. So, we're trying to close the gap and also get other people involved, and which is a short end of actually doing the dispatch as well as our police. And one other thing is Judge Covenant and myself and Superintendent Parker are, are in talks about trying to come up with a, a program where we're going to add to public safety in our schools. More is going to come on that as we have these talks and so on and figure out the, how this is going to work. But we want to invest in our kids and making sure that when they go to school, that they're safe. So, we'll keep that on, on topic to you all, and we'll let you know how that comes out. All right? Okay, other committee meetings? Is that the only one we had?
I think we had finance as well.
We'll be talking about that here in a minute.
Oh.
Yeah. The budget.
Is that the only one? Okay. At this time, as we have Georgetown Municipal Water Sewer Service, and this is Jayce, he's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is simple approval of minutes from our public hearing that was conducted related to our special sewer class. That's the senior citizen rate, and it's just an approval of minutes that we are required to do.
Motion.
Motion is made and properly second. Are there further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Motion carried.
And the next item is the first reading of the second ordinance that we're required to, for the council to implement. And that is in order for us to put into place the, the new sewer class for senior citizens, and that will be effective June 1 of this year upon council's passage of the ordinance.
In order to relate to sewer user classification summary. One, the age special class of sewer users will shuffle to senior citizens over the age of 65. Two, provides a 10% discount on monthly water and sewer services for senior citizens receiving services from GMWSS. Three, includes the start date of June 1, 2023 for the discount and confirms the discount's effectiveness until amended or eliminated by ordinance. Four, otherwise provides for compliance with the requirements of KRS 96.910 through KRS 96.927. Five, provides for repeal of inconsistent laws, severability of provisions, and an effective date of compassage and publication according to law. Full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Hold introduced and read for the first time May 8, 2023.
Motion, Mayor.
There's no motion needed, first reading. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Next, we've got six more, six more items, and I'll run through those and take your questions. But I'll start out with an out-of-budget purchase, and I reference you to your memo in your council packet. So, during the next two years, while wastewater treatment plant one is, is under construction for, for our expansion, we are keeping the existing plant in service, obviously, and knowing that a number of those structures will either be repurposed or decommissioned and demolished, we want to invest the minimal amount of capital in the existing plant over that time period. So, our current bottleneck we're having in our treatment plant process is with our sludge processing, and we're producing more sludge as our capacity's increasing. And ultimately, what happens is that sludge, after it goes through the treatment process, it's, it's dewatered, it's emptied into a container, and we have one container and one container bay, and we can fill up that container in less than one shift of work. So, what we'd like to do versus, as we have with the new design, where we'll have multiple bays and multiple containers, instead of expanding the existing sludge processing facility, what we'd like to do is just buy a truck that we can have, has the capability to pick those containers up and move them on site. Rumpke takes that sludge in those containers, disposes of it at the landfill. However, they can't be at our beck and call for when we need a container switched out. They'll leave us all the containers we want on site, we just need this truck. We feel like this is the most efficient way, the cheapest way, to be able to continue to process sludge, stay ahead of the game, and ultimately prevent violations in our treatment plant process. So, we put, we put out for bid, we don't need a new truck, for, for this type of truck. We think $80,000 to $100,000, we don't need that. This truck's going to go to plant one, and that's where it's going to live. We actually think additionally, when the new plant's online, there still will be value, but we can determine that later. But we requested bids for a pre-owned vehicle, we received none, so we just started shopping on our own, and we found one at Nicholasville that we think fits our, our purpose, and it's for sale for $25,000. We, I said this is out of budget. This, we do have plenty of funds in our vehicle depreciation fund because we haven't been able to buy trucks in three years. So, we feel like this is a, a good spend for two years of use. Questions?
What's the mileage on that vehicle, and what's the condition of the vehicle?
We've inspected it, we've driven it, the condition is good. I believe the mileage is, is up there. I think it's north of 500,000 miles, but I was told for this type of truck, these will go to a million miles. And again, we're, we're taking it to the site, and we're, it's going to pretty much live on the site. This isn't something that we're buying for roadworthy and for going on trips.
Would Public Works be able to use that vehicle also, that truck also, or? Would you have any use for it?
I don't know what kind of truck it is.
Is this a roll-off container truck?
Cable or?
I believe it's a cable. I'm not, I'll have to look at the spec.
I mean, we look like good or something. We have two smalls now, the hooker. They're not, how many, what's a yard of them, roll-offs?
15. I think we can only load it to 12.
Our, ours is 15.
It's a pretty heavy dumpster with that dewatered sludge, it's dense.
Motion, Mayor. A motion, Mayor, to, for the approval.
Second. Second. Are there further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have a change order for our treatment plant number two grit removal process. This change order is cumulative in the amount of $29,515.84, and it covers three items. It's a replacement of an existing breaker we were hoping to reuse, but as we've gotten in, it's, it's not going to be usable. We're correcting an underground piping conflict that, that couldn't have been predicted until we got in entrenched. We did potholing, and we did spot digging, still didn't have this conflict in design, but it has been uncovered now with full trench opening of, of a pipeline. So, we have to correct that, and then some additional paving and curb that we added to the project. This project, these changes, come out of our Fund Two from Toyota, and this is to their benefit, so this is not coming out of our Fund One from, from ratepayer money. And, and they have approved this change order.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Second. Are there questions or expressions? All those in favor of the motion signify.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Next, we have a construction contract and a purchase order for Skycat for a new communications tower at Plant One. We designed and bid the project, this project, separate from the treatment plant one expansion and upgrade, as this requires a specialty contractor. So what would have happened there if we'd included it at that time? This was planned, as we would have simply been paying an additional markup from the general contractor to sub this work. So we're, we've designed this and doing this in-house in order to save some funds there. The tower it provides, SCADA, it provides all of our communications, SCADA internet network access for Plant One, Plant Two, and our water treatment plant. The current tower, it will be removed as part of some of the facilities that are being decommissioned and demolished. So we're moving it to a new location. And we received no bids for this project when we advertised, so we negotiated with Skycat, who's done this work for us in the past. Budget was $30,000 for this tower. With our negotiated price being $34,242.56, the remaining roughly $4,200 will be redirected from our Plant One O and M budget.
Motion made?
I'll second.
And second, are there further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Next is a budgeted purchase for Mead Equipment for a new mini excavator. Mead was our only bidder. However, we budgeted $60,000 for this purchase and we're under budget at $56,450. And this is for our distribution crews that can use this. It's a smaller piece of equipment. We can get in backyards easier, less damage to properties that we have to go back and restore. We can use this for taps, repairs, and it'll get its, its use when we begin our EPA mandated lead and copper service inventories as we have to expose customer sewer, customer water service laterals as part of this inventory. This is a budgeted purchase and it came in just under $4,000 under budget.
Motion is made?
Second.
Second, are there discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Next, oh, yes, sir.
Is there money, any more like a grant money for this activity? Can we get to the, can we discuss that with that or?
Talking about for the tractor?
Yes. You're talking about for the lead and copper inventory? Potentially, yes, but I'm going to predict that any funding received and allocated at the federal level for lead and copper will go in, will ultimately go to replacement. And so that will, there will be, the amount of funding for replacement will be far less than, than what's needed when that time comes. And so we can use it for the excavator, we can use it for replacing service laterals.
All right.
Next, we have a construction contract and purchase order for Buchanan Contracting in the amount of $168,130. This is for decommissioning of one of our old pump stations out on Payne's Depot. This project eliminates a pump station by installing a very short run of gravity sewer. That's always a positive for us. Get rid of a pump station and flow by gravity. Buchanan does work for us, and we've talked to them about their bid because we actually estimated this in our budget at 400,000, and they came in at far less than that. So we will take it, and they said that they would, they wanted the project at that bid.
Motion is made? Second, are there discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise.
Last one. We have purchase order for Judy Construction in the amount of $2,109,000, and this is the purchase order that accompanies the construction contract approved at your last meeting. This is for our sludge improvements at Plant Two.
Make a motion, Mayor. Motion is made?
Second.
Second, motion is made and properly second. Are there questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Mayor Jenkins for coming and spending the morning with us at the water treatment plant. And he's pretty sharp on the water treatment stuff, so thank you for your time and your interest, so.
It's because of having a science background. Next, I see your attorney.
Go ahead and do the reading and then we can...
An ordinance amending Chapter Eight of the Georgetown Code of Ordinance is to correct inaccuracies and redundancies and establish a revised fee building schedule for building inspection services. Summary, one, delete Sections Eight through Four and Eight, Five, as these provisions are covered under the Personnel Ordinance. Two, amend Section Eight Thirty-Four to establish a revised building inspection and permit fee schedule and provide for automatic 3% increases on a biennial basis. Three, delete Section Eight Sixty-Four as the Kentucky Building Code establishes these standards statewide. Four, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions on an effective date of July 1, 2023, and upon passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and read publicly for the first time May 8, 2023.
So I think Stacy will reference this a little bit in her, in her budget presentation, or at least in, in the discussion about building inspection staff compensation. I put on council, on everybody's desk, the current fee schedule. So you'll see, that fee schedule has not been revised in, I think, 10 years. And as, as you all know, a department like Building Inspection, the goal is for the fees charged for the services to generate the revenue needed to run the department, not to generate any profit because that would be unlawful. But this adjustment was, was very necessary. Jim Burgess, our, our head building inspector, did a great job providing the data to the finance committee and others. And I know he'd be, if council is interested, I know he'd be willing to speak to the council before vote on this. But this is just a way we can close the gap. We're subsidizing this department annually. It's an interlocal department, so we split the expenses with the county 50/50. But just adjusting these fees will allow us to, to close that gap on the amount that the general fund is required to allocate for the operation of the department. So he did, he did put together a little spreadsheet for me, or for Stacy, actually, and showed based on 2022 permits polled and that data that this would generate about, a delta of about $140,000 on an annual basis, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it's, it's closing that gap. It's working on allowing the department to operate as it should. And Jim takes a lot of pride in, in trying to operate his department efficiently. And, and I think, I think this is going to help, help bridge that, that gap, like I said. If you all have any questions. Also, Jim has requested adjustments to his employees' salaries. And last year, those were, the promise was we'll tie that to an increase in the fee schedule. So it makes sense. Once we adjust the revenues generated through the fees, we'll look at the compensation of your department, so.
And this one we have in our packet was 10 years old?
Yes, I believe that passed in, it was either 2012 or 2014. So it's right around that 10-year age and in, in pretty dire need of adjustment. If, if the full council would like, we can, we can email out just a little data he pulled on neighboring jurisdictions and what their fees look like, as well as their staffing and things like that. We have a very, a very seasoned, experienced building inspection department, and they're able to do the work that they do with the staffing they have based on that experience. So glad to share any of that, that data with the rest of the council or the public, of course. Yes.
At the present time?
Mm-hmm.
What are, what's, how much money are we subsidizing?
Give me one second. So at the present time, I know we budget, I believe, about $400,000 for building inspection permit revenue. And, just give me one second and I will find it. And the department budget at the current time is about $617,000. So $217,000 is the difference. Of course, that is split between the city and county. So we're each about $108,000 that we're covering. With these proposed fee schedule, we're looking at the revenue increasing to about $570,000 and the budget being about $639,000. So about a $70,000 difference, $35,000 each for the city and county with the proposed fee schedule.
All right, I've got a dumb question. So we're still going to subsid, that difference is going to...
We're going to subsidize a little bit. I mean, we talked a lot with Jim over the course of the last year. We went back to the fee schedule revised a couple times. I believe these revised fees, he gave us some examples of a 3,200 square foot home, $250,000 construction cost. Right now, we would be at the bottom of the 10 cities, he gave us for comparison. The revised fees would probably put us in about the middle of the pack, but he, I think, felt it was what our current market allowed as far as the building fees. But we would still be subsidizing, yes, about $35,000 each under this plan. We'll also note, this, this is like the fourth iteration of this fee schedule. So this, this came to the finance committee over a year ago, the finance committee at the time, and proposed from, for example, you, you have the schedule where it shows 12 cents per square foot as the first multiplier. The first round that he proposed was only increasing that to 15 cents. So you'll see now that, you'll see significant increases. And I think, like, like Stacy said, I think Jim has a pulse on the market locally, and I think he, he found that, that number to be defensible. The council can always revisit this based on how the numbers come back. We did build in that 3% biennial increase just to prevent the council from repeatedly needing to come back to this. But if, if in this first year, the numbers aren't operating how they should and the council wants to reconsider, obviously, that's, that's within your purview. And, and I will say also, Jim said when he provided that estimate of $140,000 increase, he was basing that on 2022 calendar year permits filed, and he said he thought it was a conservative increase. So it's possible that at the end of the day, we won't be subsidizing the full $70,000, but that was a conservative, conservative revenue estimate from Jim when he was calculating it based on last year's permits. So it is possible the fees will, will come in higher than the 570 we budgeted.
I don't mean to throw a wrench into the plans here at the last minute. I know this is the first reading tonight. Is there any chance at all? I mean, we see what the proposal, or the, we see what this, the numbers are on this first reading. Is there any way that we can see what the numbers would need to be in order to break even so we don't have to subsidize? Is there a chance maybe we can get that information by the next council meeting?
I mean, we can certainly work with Jim. Jim has to base it on the permit numbers.
Okay.
Like I said, they're estimates, and of course, he is looking at it, I think, mainly based on the residential. Obviously, that's the biggest portion of it. But, I mean, we can talk to Jim. And like I said, it's, it was a conservative revenue estimate. The thing we want to make sure is we're not making money on it, so.
So if we did, if we did this then, if we move forward with this and have a second reading on this, are we, as long as the economy doesn't take a downturn, are we thinking possibly by year two or year three, it's probably going to break even? Maybe year two?
I mean, knowing...
I'm thinking year two, to be honest with you. I, I mean, just, we, you know, as Stacy said, we didn't want to make it too high to where we're out of market with, with other, other communities right now.
The other thing is with wastewater plant one coming online and hopefully first quarter '25, we should see an increase in growth, and that will tie into this. So I think that some of the revenues will, we'll see some revenue increases because of that growth. So I'm thinking probably year two we should be breaking even. And if not, that second year, there's a 3% increase planned to go into effect on top of this. So every two years, a 3% increase.
Okay. Actually, we have the first reading of the amendment of zoning and landscape and land use buffers ordinance. Sponsors of Todd Stone and Mark Shawalter. And I think we have Joe here.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I was here to summarize the changes. If you have any questions, feel free to shoot them at me. So this is a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance, landscape buffer requirements, which are part of the zoning ordinance. This has come out of the conference plan update. The Soil Conservation Service came to the planning commission with kind of a laundry list of things they'd like us to look at in the conference plan update. This is one thing that we told them we could tackle now. So we formed a committee with a couple of city appointees to the planning commission, a couple fiscal court members, a couple members of Soil Conservation Service Board, and we came up with this recommendation and went through a public hearing in January. Planning Commission recommended approval. We took it to fiscal court work session on Friday, and we'll, we'll take it to them for first reading this Friday. But essentially, the change is any urban, residential, commercial, industrial use that butts up to agricultural zoning, so this is mainly on the periphery of the city at the USB boundary, will be required to include a setback of 50 feet and a landscape buffer setback 35 feet from the property line and a new fence, basically to prevent trespass onto the agricultural land to allow ag operations to continue without any impact from the urban use. No climb wire fence, six foot high at the property boundary. So the previous buffer was 15 feet with landscaping at the edge. So this moves the landscaping back. It also doesn't allow any structures in that 50-foot setback and no side fences. So that'll be a true buffer. It can be incorporated, this is for new development, so these are new subdivisions kind of at that boundary. It can be, you know, this 50-foot can be incorporated into the design of the subdivision so it could be a landscape kind of shared amenity. It can be stormwater detention in that area. If it's a low area, it could be screen, just screening that the subdivision can use, but it can't be, no structures are allowed in that. And that's really to, to match up the setback. So ag property is required to have 50-foot setback. This adds a 50-foot setback to that urban use at the boundary and then increases the fence to a six-foot-high no-climb wire fence. Instead of, right now, it's a, it's a 54-inch plank top rail wire fence, so it increases that. So, you know, people, kids can't climb over, teenagers can't climb over it, dogs can't jump over it. It, it provides that buffer. So that's, that's the recommendation. It's, it's laid out kind of in our land, landscape and buffers ordinance, which I, as I said, is part of the zoning ordinance. The fiscal court, I think, was, was on board. They didn't, I didn't really have any negative feedback, but they haven't had their first reading yet, so it'll be on Friday.
An ordinance amending or creating certain sections of the Georgetown Scott County zoning ordinance and landscape and land use buffers ordinance. Summary, one, amend Section 4.19 subsection C of the Georgetown Scott County zoning ordinance to provide the minimum setback of 50 feet for secondary structures from land zone... to provide the minimum setback of 50 feet for secondary structures from land zone A. One. Two, amend section 6.10 of the landscape and land use buffers ordinance to establish that no single tree species may be used for more than one-third of the plantings to meet the requirements of section 6.12 or 6.13. Three, amend section 6.12 of the landscape and land use buffers ordinance to create consistency between the property perimeter requirements chart and section 1, 6.10, and to provide limitations on trees and fencing within the buffer space. Four, create section 6.14 of the landscape and land use buffers ordinance to establish agricultural buffering requirements. Five, provides the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions and effective data upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced in public where for the first time, May 8th, 2023.
Thank you. Cheryl. Next, we have the city engineer, the municipal, one more, I'm sorry. Municipal order regarding the hiring of our computer specialists.
Stacy, do you want to help me out on the budget portion of this? So as you all know, Mayor Jenkins has been talking about our tech needs, specifically following Ricky Lusk's departure from the police department. That kind of spurred conversation about needs we have citywide in order to manage all of our managed service providers, our, our contract with NetGains, Spectrum, Internet, our phone system, all of those different players, our website, our social media in some cases. So we have on our personnel ordinance right now, the position of computer specialist. It hasn't been filled for many years. But the, the goal would be to, to fill this position and allow this person to citywide help manage those contracts and act as liaison with those vendors to, to make sure, one, that we're operating as efficiently as we can, but two, that we're getting our, our, for lack of better words, our money's worth out of these contracts. And I think in some cases, we, the contract is signed and we move on and we're not getting the full functionality out of the, out of the, out of the organization. So we could go into more detail there, but I'll let, I'll let Stacy talk about it from a budget perspective.
And, and the reason we're bringing this to you as a municipal order now, with vacancies that we've had in City Hall over the last couple of months, the mayor does have enough money in the current year budget to fund the position. However, it will be presented as part of the proposed budget that you'll get later tonight. So we wanted to make sure council was in favor of the position before offering a job to anyone, even in, because obviously, we will not approve the budget until June. So we kind of needed that preliminary approval, even though there's money in the budget through June 30th to cover the position. We needed that preliminary approval going forward because the budget approval won't come until the first meeting in June. And, I'm just trying to think of anything else. And like you said, this will help out police department. Obviously, it'll be a trial base basis, we'll see how it goes. They had a police officer who was assigned to tech duties, basically a desk job at the police department. This will free up that position to go back out into patrol. And we will monitor how this does. There'll be absorbing some of that officer's tech duties through their administrative assistants, other administrative staff at the police department. And in the citywide position, this computer specialist position will also take over troubleshooting, computers, copiers, printers, some of those day-to-day things that that person handled for the police department, so.
Do I have a motion? Motion is made. Second, are there further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. At this time, we have city engineer municipal order approving dedication of streets in the Woodland Park subdivision.
Thank you all. This is a street dedication. It comes from planning and zoning. When the streets have been built out on a new subdivision, curving gutters in, the sidewalks ran, everything's complete. It's ready to be sent to the city for, to add to our assets and to take care of the maintenance from this point forward. So this is for Woodland subdivision, Woodland Park subdivision. That is out 25, just past Ann Mason and Royal Springs on the right, the new subdivision you've seen going out there. That, a section of that is completed, so it's ready to be absorbed into the city with your approval.
Do I have a motion? Motion is made, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made, properly second. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Next, in finance, we have the municipal order adopting an investment policy.
Hello. So one of the things the Finance Committee has been talking about a lot lately is would you have some excess cash? Our fund balance has built up and we want to make the best use of that money possible. So we are entertaining some proposals about investments right now and we wanted to be sure to have a formal investment policy in place with council prior to council accepting any of those proposals and investing funds. So this is just kind of a guideline, some of it, especially the section six on authorized investments, that is pulled straight from the state statute on what local governments are allowed to invest in. So, so we just wanted to have something on the books, how we go about that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made. Second, other discussion or questions?
I have, uh.
Yes.
This is just the English major in me. Twice hereby is spelled Herbie.
Well, I will say, number one, obviously Spellcheck probably didn't catch that on me, but I will.
And I looked it up to see if whether or not that was a different thing and Herbie actually just means using herbs and spices, so.
Full confession, this is a policy that actually lived in the city's files prior to me. But Devin and I could not find where the city had ever formally adopted it. So I am gonna at least not take full credit in the sense that I did not draft this from the beginning.
It's under investment authority and.
Okay.
There's one more.
I will make sure.
And under collateral, those two sections. But I also have, I also have a question.
Yes.
It says that the investment program will be Herbie delegated, hereby delegated to the mayor and finance director upon advice by the Finance Committee. How will that happen? Like you all get together and decide where to put the funds or?
We will, and I'll look back and that may be one thing I meant to. Once we've got the policy in place, we can look through that. I think that was kind of starting off on the transactions. If there is a desire to have council approval on those, we can. The orig, the old investment policy I found that was very brief, pretty much said, finance director and city clerk could invest in CDs and everything pretty much without any council approval. So this was a little formal level above that. So we would, through recommendations from the Finance Committee, communicate to council how we're investing, but, so.
It's kind of a big decision to how we invest the money. So I, I'm wondering, I, I'm not against that.
No, that's fine.
I'm just wondering of the process of, it's a lot of money.
I mean, we can certainly make revisions. This was a relatively new policy. We just brought it at the last Finance Committee meeting. So if there are recommendations for changes, we can certainly bring it back at a future meeting.
Anytime we're talking about large amounts of money, we're gonna make sure everybody has a force on this decision because I think that's, that's the right thing to do. And we, we're not gonna be the ones charged just with the committee, but the committee will make a recommendation and we'll bring that recommendation to you or like we've done with all other committees. Comes from, from that, then you all can look at it and you can also, we'll try to give you options what we're looking at from there.
So it says here, the mayor and finance director shall have the authority subject to the disapproval of the governing body, which I assume is us.
Yes.
To establish additional specific written procedures, but it doesn't say that the governing body will be part of making the decisions on where and how the money's invested. So I don't know, I just think we need to have some discussion on that.
Okay.
And if nothing else, at least, I mean, we, I know we were asking these questions back in January. Where's the money? What interest rates are we getting in return for the money? And we're now in, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, we're in May now. I think at the very least, we need to have quarterly updates on, you know, what.
Yeah.
What, you know, maybe not just for the benefit of this council, but moving forward for the benefit of future councils and future mayors so they, everybody knows where the money is and, you know, what the return is that we're getting. And I think it's important information to know.
We can make sure I include that in the quarterly financial reports going forward.
Thank you, Stacy. So we have a.
So in terms of next steps, it sounds like there's a desire to change a little bit of the language of the policy and go back maybe at the next meeting. The reason for bringing this today, and just, I don't know how much of the council is updated. Stacy did prepare and advertise a request for proposals. And that request for proposals, the, the period is closed. We received three. The Finance Committee is gonna be evaluating those proposals and ultimately making the recommendation. And I think, I think the plan from the Finance Committee's perspective was always to bring it to the council.
Yes.
Yes.
So we can, we can make some revisions. If there's anything else in that policy that anybody on the council sees as an opportunity to improve, please just reach out to the mayor and he'll, he'll get in touch with us about, about that language. But we'll make those spelling corrections and that, that revision that, that requires city council approval in deciding where to place the money to see, to see the best return on the recommendation of the Finance Committee. So if there's anything else you all see, just reach out to the mayor, but we'll hold off on, on that until next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willow.
All right, next is the quarterly financial report.
Okay. I'm gonna go through just our typical quarterly financial report with our five major revenues. This is for the quarter ending March 31st, 2023. So as you can see with our payroll tax collections, through March, we've collected $12,140,968. That is 80% of our $15,250,000 budget. And so that's a little ahead of where we should be at this time of year. Normally, we'd be at 75%. I will say though, that this year, March was the three payroll month, whereas last year, April was the three payroll month. So it's showing that we're $2 million ahead of where we were last year, but that is because the, uh, three, the, um, three pay period month changes from year to year. And on the next page, the net profits tax, as you can see, I went ahead and updated this through April because we did have some remittance from the Revenue Commission from the tax returns that were due April 15th. And through April, we are at about $2,537,371 for net profits. And our budget was 2.2 million. And this will come up during our budget conversation, but one of the conversations we had during Finance Committee about our budgeting revenue for net profits, because obviously, last year, we received $3 million. But as you can see, even through those numbers in April, we're still running about $414,000 behind where we were last year. So I think last year may have had some of those late returns post-pandemic that kind of inflated that number a little bit. So again, we, as you'll see when I get into the budget, we were conservative with our net profits revenue projection. The insurance premium tax collection, even though this shows it through May, I went ahead, that is four through the quarter ended March 31st. So the quarter ends March 31st, the returns are not due until April 30th. So it shows collections through May, but it's all back to the quarter ending March 31st.
So there's, there's actually two months left that.
Yes. So for insurance premium tax, when you're looking at this, this is three quarters.
Okay.
So we have collected $4,594,536 for the first three quarters of the fiscal year, which is, and that puts us at 78%. So that's just past 75%, which is where we should be for three quarters. We're about $159,953 ahead of where we were last year.
So we, are we possibly anticipating a pretty, pretty good June then? Would that be?
Yeah, June usually is one of our larger collection quarters for insurance premium tax. So at this time last year, we were at 73% of the budget collected. And this year, we're at 78% of the budget collected through the state. So I think we are running a little bit ahead there. Property tax collections, we have collected $2,390,571. We had previously increased the budget a little bit to $2 million, but we're at 107% of our budget collected. And last, alcoholic beverage regulatory fees, through the first three quarters, we're at $1,091,906 of our $1,464,711 budget. That's right at 75%. I think there will be some more returns probably trickling in for that January to March quarter. I just went ahead and put in the numbers that we had through today. So there will be some additional funds on that. Any questions on the quarterly financial report?
Stacy, in, in looking at all of these numbers, do you have any concerns at this point or do you?
No, not at this point. I think our revenues are, are, these are, you know, kind of major ones that we look at. I think they're holding strong. I think we're, we're doing well with growth. And you'll see that reflected in some of the numbers in the budget. And we'll get into that as soon as you're all ready. If you don't have any more questions on the quarterly.
Stacy, so you said we're, we're $2 million ahead of projection. What did you say?
Uh, no, what I was saying is, if you look at payroll taxes, the very first sheet, it's showing that we're $2 million ahead of where we were last year.
Okay.
But I said to keep in mind, this year, March was the month where you have three pay periods.
Okay.
Last year, it was April. So we're showing ahead of last year. I think we're still ahead of last year by a good bit, it's just not the full $2 million.
Okay.
So. And, and if you'll look at like March of last year, it looks like there were some delayed returns as well. So March of '22 was showing a very low number. So it, it says $2 million ahead of this time last year, but that'll, I think, lessen when you see it through the end of the last quarter.
Okay, next is going to be the 20, 23, 24 budget presentation. But before I begin that, I want to make a couple comments on, on this. You know, being on this job for about almost now five months and one thing I've learned about this job is doing business in Georgetown and actually takes money. You know, everybody wants things and everybody, our citizens want the best. But also, we as leaders want to provide that if we can. But again, you have to have money to, to do that. We want, we don't want to ever be second to none. We talks about doing what's best for our people. You go to the grocery store and you find out that, you know, milk has gone up, eggs has gone up, everything's going up. You know, doing business here, you know, infrastructure, everything else going up. You know, salaries are going up because of that. You know, the cost of living is going up. You know, people are now getting two or three, four jobs just to make in meat. And, you know, this, you know, this budget is something where we're taking a lot of time. And I've had some sleepless nights, I'll tell you that. Because I want to try to do what's best for people. I think we all want to do what's best for people. But the reality is that, you know, you have to be under some restraints of knowing what you got to work with. You have boundaries. And because of where our payroll struc, uh, our revenue structure is in some cases, we're kind of stacked, that almost put our hand behind our back. But we're gonna take some aggressive measures. You know, I sit back for about four or five months and kind of get the lay of the land. But council and about, once we get this taken care of, I'm gonna bring to you some aggressive avenues of revenue that I want to put on the table for us to look at and to vote. Because it's time for us now to start quick kicking this can down the road and start doing what's best for people. Because that's what they put us here for. And not doing the same old same old, but doing what's best for people. And I think that's what we're gonna do. And this budget shows that we're making an effort to try to do what best we can. Again, it's probably gonna be a little bit over what we want, but I think in the long run, you know, we get these revenue streams, streams, excuse me, streams in place, we should be able to. we get these revenue streams, streams, excuse me, streams in place, we should be able to not dip into the fund balance. And that's the idea. We, we can't sustain ourselves doing this. And, and again, we want how, the people of Georgetown, to provide them the best service we can give them. And their quality of life is second to none. And that's what we want to do.
Devin, you have a clicker? There we go. Uh, first is just an overview, high level of our general fund budget. The fiscal year 2024 projected general fund revenues are $33,929,670. For fiscal year 2023, our revenue budget was $31,453,067. So this is showing a 2.4 million or 7.9% growth in revenue. So as mentioned, uh, during our quarterly financial review, our revenues are strong. They are, and that is a good thing. However, as you'll see, our expenses continue to grow as well. So we want to make sure we're keeping pace. Our fiscal year 2024 proposed general fund expenses are $35,239,207. And our amended general fund expenses, I'm sorry, for 2023 are $33,465,779. Um, and I did take out City Hall transfer because that was a large amount and I wanted you to see it comparable. So this is a $1,773,428 dollar increase over last year, or a 5.3% increase in proposed expenditures. And, um, you'll maybe take your notes, but I will send this PowerPoint out to you all tomorrow so that you have it as well. And our fiscal year 2024 proposed budget uses $1,309,538 of prior year revenues to balance the operating budget for the general fund. And, uh, we'll talk about this more on the last slide of this presentation. But I know in the Finance Committee meetings, a, a couple of you had attended in addition to our Finance Committee. It's not unusual that we start out adopting a budget with a deficit balance. I think over my 10 years here, there's only been probably one year that we didn't adopt a budget with a deficit balance. On the flip side, there's only been one year where at the end of that year, we actually did dip into reserves for operating expenditures. Now, we had one year where we dipped in for some very large capital projects that council approved. But for operating expenses, there was one year where we dipped in, I think it was around $450,000. So, um, I've always said to Finance Committee and to previous councils, you know, that I budget conservatively on revenues. I want to make sure that we budget accurately, that we, that it reflects what we need. But I also budget conservatively because I would rather beat our budget revenue projection than, than come in under, so.
Stacy, on the, on the $10.3 million
Yes.
For the City Hall renovation, I know we've talked about this, but just
Yes.
For clarification, we can ultimately bond that money down the road, correct?
And I'll, I'll talk about that in a couple of slides
Okay.
During the presentation, but the 2023 budget, uh, the current budget has a $10.3 million transfer from general fund to capital projects. And, and you'll see the effects of that, what that would be on fund balance on the last slide when we get there. But I would, uh, in consultation with Finance Committee, with the mayor, you know, I, I would recommend that our next step be getting a fiscal agent, uh, who can help us have those conversations about these large capital projects. And I would recommend, um, that the council finance part or all of the City Hall project rather than dipping into, uh, fund balance by 10 million.
Is it two years?
I'm sorry?
Do we have two years?
It's between, there's one trigger that's 18 months and one that's 36. And I don't have the resolution in front of me, but I can pull that. We adopted it in April or May of '22, I believe. So we're at about the 12-month mark. So we'll, we'll look at that again, so. But we did have that reimbursement resolution, so we can go backwards, uh, and all the design fees and everything, capture those back if we want. Devin? The revenue changes from the fiscal year 2023 budget, uh, this is just kind of breaking everything down by the high level category. You will see taxes, uh, which include property taxes, motor vehicle taxes, bank franchise taxes, occupational license fees, which include our net profits, our payroll taxes, permits and licenses, the vast bulk of that 6.9 million is going to be the insurance premium tax, franchise fees, uh, electric, water, uh, Bluegrass Energy, Owen Electric, KU, garbage franchise, 2.1 million, and intergovernmental, so anything coming from the state reimbursement for police and fire incentive to the money that we receive from the county for the interlocals they govern and their half of our interlocals, uh, is 2.6. So a couple of notes I wanted to make on this, the employee withholding budget for this year was 15.25 million. We have increased that budget to 16 million for fiscal year '24. I do feel that's a conservative estimate. And the Toyota incentive payment, the Kentucky Jobs Retention Act, that goes through fiscal year either '27, I think it's fiscal year '27, that is still 1.2 million, uh, for fiscal year 2024. That is not factored into the budget. That's just a footnote, uh, for you all to know that, if it wasn't for the Job Retentions Act, that would be added into our payroll tax revenue. Our net profits, as mentioned during the quarterly revenue report, our budget for this year was 2.2 million and recommending a budget of 2.5 million for fiscal year 2024. And I want to look, you have your detailed budget document as well. And I just wanted to point out a couple of other revenues. Property taxes, uh, increased by the 4%. We are allowed by statute to take a 4% property, uh, this is on page two of your full budget document. So that budget is $2,482, uh, provided we take a 4% increase. Of course, we also will receive any increased revenues for new properties. And I wanted to show you that the building permits, uh, 10-0004125, as mentioned, we budgeted $570,000 under the assumption that this ordinance will get passed before July 1. We had previously budgeted $400,000. So that's a $170,000 increase in building permit revenue, uh, if we're able to pass that new ordinance. And as you see, insurance license fees, we budgeted 5.9 million this year, budgeting 6.3 million next year. And those are the big ones that I kind of wanted to just point out to you on the revenue side. And this is just an overall general fund revenue trend, uh, for the last 10 years. So our low point, 2014, 21.9 million. 2021, let's see, up to 27 million. 2022 was 35 million. That did include ARPA mon-, uh, ARPA funds. And, and we also budgeted, let me look at that, let me see. Um, I know we budgeted a little low on property taxes for that year, or not property taxes, I'm sorry, employee, uh, withholding. That was also the year our insurance license fee amount went up, um, fiscal year '22. That's when that revenue increase took place. And, uh, I could have said the transfer from ARPA. So again, the 2023 budget, 31.4, and projected for 2024 is 33.9. So generally speaking, um, we've seen an increased revenue trend since about 2017 forward. And breaking it down into our bigger categories on the next slide, employee withholding, you can kind of see that. We did, I think in 2016, we had a dip there, but we have had a steady increase ever since then on our employee, occupational license fee for employee withholding. And net profits, um, we still have the one year in here, in 2016, we received an amended return for a prior year, so that inflated that number quite a bit. You can see from 2018 forward, a slow, steady growth in net profits. Much slower growth than I would say on the payroll side. And again, that kind of peak in 2022, I do think was kind of the backlog of returns being filed post-pandemic. So very slow increase on that.
Stacy, what is that? Peak in 2016?
That is, we had an amended return filed that year. So it was, trying to remember the exact amount, but it was probably close to $2 million for one amended return. So we received a very high spike in the revenue that year.
Let's do that again.
So, that's, that's out of the ordinary that we would have had that. But you can see there was a little bit of a dip in, uh, net profits and then slowly going back up from that dip. All right, expenditure changes, fiscal year 2023. So I've lumped these into our big categories, the administration and debt. This includes, uh, city hall operations, uh, cost for city council, city clerk, citywide utilities. Debt service is about 4.5 million. Building inspection, 639,000. Police is 9,47,000. Fire and code, 9,200,000. Public works is about 3.5 million. Interlocals and nonprofits, so this includes our share of the county interlocals. This also includes our contributions to community organizations, is 7.3 million. And transfers to other funds, this consists of transfers to capital projects, uh, business park to pay the debt service, and mainly stormwater. The bulk of that is our transfer to the stormwater fund of $1,155,000. And just a little different breakdown here so that you can see it, um, kind of the piece of the pie. And this is the part that I always want to point out, so our citizens know, and so you all know, where the bulk of our budget goes. 52% of our general fund budget is spent on police and fire. It's spent on public safety. So just over half. Our second largest expenditure is interlocals. This includes, as I mentioned, the county departments that we pay half of, uh, the Revenue Commission, parks and rec, planning and zoning, that is 18% of our budget. And only 9% of our budget, uh, 3.4 million, is spent strictly on administration. That's after taking out the debt payments, but, so I just wanted you all to see that. I think it's important to see where we do spend the bulk of our money. Salary and benefits, personnel is obviously our largest expense. We are a city, we're service oriented, um, that is what we do. So I wanted to go through the salary and benefits and personnel. This budget does include a recommended 6.5% cost of living adjustment for all employees. That is the same adjustment that the Department of Local Government recommended for elected officials in January. And the cost of that is approximately 1.06 million for the 6.5%. There are some additional salary adjustments requests, uh, proposed. Fire and police personnel are recommended to receive an additional $4,000 beyond COLA. And this, as you'll see when we get into the request, the police department requested to increase, uh, starting pay by $11,300. And with COLA and the $4,000, the total increase to police will be $7,100. So, um, a little bit short of what they requested, but we've had a lot of discussions amongst the Finance Committee about what we could afford, what we felt we could responsibly fund, and also keeping fire and police starting pay equal in the budget. The fire department requested a salary adjustment of $6,000 after COLA. So obviously, we are recommending $4,000 instead. And the cost for that, for the police and fire, is $779,000. In addition, building inspection employees, there are five of them. The three most senior inspectors, which are level one inspectors, are recommended to receive a 10% increase beyond COLA, and the level one inspector and the permit technician are recommended to receive a 5% increase beyond COLA. As Devin mentioned earlier, this is something that they requested last year and that we discussed. We would propose when they came back with the revised fee schedule. So as we bring the revised fee schedule, uh, we are recommending those adjustments to their salary. I think total, it's maybe $30,000, around $30,000. Uh, it's not a, a huge sum of money. Fire, uh, and police both requested increases for their administrative assistance. Police did not request a specific amount, but as we mentioned, in light of the officer leaving who handled their tech duties, their admin assistants are going to pick up some of those login maintenance for some of the various programs they use. Um, I'm sure helping with open records and some other things. So we are recommending, um, either a $3,000 or a $1,500 increase for admin assistance depending on longevity. So there are the two admin assistants that have been here the longest and have the most responsibility that we're recommending $3,000. For the public works admin assistant and the receptionist at police department, we're recommending $1,500 due to the, either the level of responsibility or how long they've been here. So we wanted to show that, um, I guess, respect that request, even though we didn't give quite the full amount. Fire department requested $5,000 for their admin assistant. Um, they do only have one, so. And then looking at the admin assistant for public works, even though that wasn't requested, we always want to evaluate that group of employees together because it's such a small group. So that was the recommended, uh, increases for those. Dispatchers requested, uh, a $2, I think, additional starting pay, uh, beyond what we're giving. So they requested that starting pay be at $24 an hour. With COLA plus an additional 70 cents per hour for dispatch, we're getting them to $22 an hour starting pay. And looking at the market, we felt that that was reasonable compared to jurisdictions around us.
Stacy, and having recently spoken to dispatch at the, at the school, um, they also are having trouble recruiting.
Yes.
And so this increase will help there as well. We hear a lot from fire and, uh,
Yes.
Police, but dispatch is also having difficulty.
And for this year, uh, this increase for dispatch will still be funded by our local 911 fee that we adopted back in October of 2020. One of the things, as the mayor mentioned, once this budget processes through and probably in the next year or so, that fee had the last increase July 1 of '22. It went from $6 to $7 to $8 per month. However, one thing you'll see in this budget is, uh, an increase in the maintenance contract for the new radio system that we put in. So that's something we may need to look at in the future. But for this year, uh, the 911 budget is still self-sustaining for the city's half.
Stacy?
Yes.
Can you go back and, on the police, fire, and public works administrative assistance?
Yes.
Can you explain again how?
So, police and fire both requested increases for their admin assistants. Obviously, we tried to research any requests they've made. Fire specifically requested a $5,000 increase for their admin assistant. Uh, we're recommending $3,000. Police did not, I don't believe they recommended a specific amount, but their admin assistants are absorbing some of the duties from that tech position leaving. Mainly, I think, user, uh, maintenance. So there are lots of online web programs that the police department uses that, that officer maintained all of the users. Somebody forgot their password. Delete users when an officer leaves, add new users. So their admin assistants are going to take on a lot of that. There may be some additional that I'm overlooking, uh, that they're taking on, but I know that's one of the things. There may be some additional that I'm overlooking, uh, that they're taking on, but I know that's one of the things. Uh, so they requested that we look at that. And then we looked, like I said, when we look at admin assistance, uh, police has three, fire has one, public works has one, full time admin assistance. So we always look at them together. So even though public works wasn't requesting an increase for their admin, we want to look at them all to make sure we're being fair. Uh, so there are two admin assistants between police and fire that are kind of at a higher level. Uh, we recommended that they receive 3,000 each. And then, like I said, there's one other one due to longevity and where she was at compared to the others, we're recommending 3,000. As we've mentioned, and I'll mention later, you know, we want to have someone come in and do a compensation study. Our admin assistants are one of those odd things where, uh, we have someone in a grade four who's an admin assistant and a receptionist in a grade five, but they do different types of work. So that's one of those things while we're recommending a compensation study. Just to straighten some of that out. But in the meantime, based on the request of the department, looking at where they were at and what was being requested and what we felt we could do that was reasonable. And those are the recommendations.
Are they going to, are those five individuals going to get the 6.5% COLA as well?
Yes.
Okay. So three of the five would get the $3,000 and two of the five would get $1,500. Would get $1,500. So we're talking $3,000 for all five. It would be an additional $3,000.
Well, yeah, I mean, the COLA, I'd have to go back and look and see exactly what their COLA is, but they probably make the high 30, low 40 range currently, um, for the lowest ones. So.
But for the two that aren't getting the $3,000 for another $3,000, all five administrative assistants would get the same, correct? Or is it not correct? So two, two of the five are only going to get $1,500.
Yes.
Three of the five individuals would get $3,000.
And it's like I said, it's due to just different levels of duties.
5% cost of living adjustment.
And part of it's, and part of it's due to seniority as well. Uh, you know, we have a couple that have been here one or two years versus seven or eight years. So, uh, we, we just tried to look at it, how they're condensed together and, and make adjustments. It was kind of, if we make an adjustment to this one, it kind of triggered looking at the other ones to make sure we kept them in line. So.
And anytime, uh, any, any compensation in addition to the COLA is applied after the COLA. So that 6.5% cost of living will be applied to existing salaries. And anything above and beyond, such as the 1,500, 3,000 or 4,000 is after the COLA is applied.
Yes. So COLA is not compounded on top of these other increases.
And, and once we get this, uh, this compensation study done, you know, all we have to do is if we plug in cost of living, then it'll just plug it in, it'll fix everything. Makes it more consistent. And also it gives us a retention. So somebody like teachers, you know, it, you know that if you stay this many years, your salary is going to bump up here. So that's the way we can keep people here.
Is our goal, do we know what our goal is yet on the timeframe of that study? Are we looking at trying to waiting until 2024 to do that study?
Uh, no, I believe as soon as the budget's approved, because we would need to, the funding is approved in the budget. We would submit, um, an RFP, request for proposals, request for quotes. I think the goal would be to bring that to council in July for approval of a contract to do a compensation study because it will take four to six months to do the study, which would have it impacting next year's budget. So we want to try to get it done in a timely manner that the results would be beneficial for next year's budget cycle. So I think that would be, as soon as the budget's passed and we know council has approved it, we would seek the quotes and bring a contract to council for approval. Uh, the next thing I just wanted to note is the CERS rates for fiscal year 22, 24 are actually decreasing, which is great. Uh, our hazardous rates have been on the increase, but they are decreasing from 49.59% to 43.69%. And non hazardous is decreasing from 26.79 to 23.34. Don't know how long they're going to decrease. Of course, those come from the state, but a little bit of a reprieve for this year. Uh, proposed employee contributions for medical, dental and vision remain the same as last year. And as mentioned below, I already gave the broken, the broken down cost, but the proposed general fund salary adjustments and COLA in total are expected to cost just over 1.8 million. And as I mentioned, about 1 million of that's the COLA, about 779,000 is the, uh, police and fire. And then the other, uh, amounts are very small compared to those. Personnel overview, uh, the following positions were added for fiscal year 2024. These are not necessarily new positions. These are positions that council has already heard about, has already approved. Uh, but we wanted to let you know that they are new compared to the fiscal year 22, 2023 budget. Council just approved the hiring of the computer specialist. Uh, the 95,923, that's total salary and benefits package. The salary is set around approximately 66,000 is, was the target salary for that. Uh, the fire department, part time maintenance, which, um, Chief Thompson has discussed with you all before, 23,633. Uh, the fire department engineers, uh, an additional 5,000 per employee for salary. And the one we want to talk about, uh, I think you've heard a little bit about this. I know police committee and finance committee have heard a lot about this. The recovery support coordinator, uh, we are looking to use our national opioid settlement funds to, uh, reach that goal of becoming a recovery ready community. And we currently have a PARI. I don't know if Devin knows what that stands for, but AmeriCorps pays for an employee to be here through the PARI program. They're already, they've been with the police department for almost three years. And they work with, um, recovery addicts, substance abuse. That program, that person, their contract expires in October. And we want to continue that program. Uh, so we want to hire someone to continue that effort, um, starting July 1. And as we mentioned before, with the victims of crime advocate that was given during the police committee update, part of what our victims of crime have done in the past is help with the angel program, which is for substance abuse. So we anticipate this person working very closely uh, with our remaining victims of crime advocate. And the total benefits and salary package is 89,151. Uh, we're looking at paying this the same as we do our victims of crime advocate. We feel it's a similar non swarm position. Uh, currently our opioid settlement funds, we've received just a little over 90, $90,000. So we do have enough to pay this first year in full. Uh, and we will continue to receive additional settlement funds. Um.
Stacy, do we have any idea of what the next payment might be?
The, the indication is that, well, you mean for the next settlement that the council authorized the mayor to, to sign on to. They have projected that the amounts will be very similar to the first settlement. So obviously, you know, Stacy referenced that $90,000 figure. So one of the, it was either Jansen with Johnson and Johnson. Um, one of them made three years worth of payments and one made five years worth of payments. So.
I think one made two and one made five.
Okay. So that 90,000 is not indicative of what we will get every year throughout this 18 year settlement period. So it, it's a little bit, they, they can make their payments in lump, um, but.
And this is probably going to be one of those positions as we go through. You know, we do have the funds in hand to fund the first year, uh, much like our victims of crime, much like, I know we're still working on getting our affordable housing person on board, but this is one of those where we, we have some grant funds that are able to fund this initiative, um, get this project, this program going, continuing this program with the police department. Um, it is something that at some point, when the settlement funds run out, I'm sure we will come back to council and ask you all to continue to support the program if we've seen the results, if we've seen, um, what we hope to see out of it.
So if, if this position costs approximately 90,000 and we get approximately 90,000 every year, there's not much left that we can use the, there's, this, this will be pretty much our.
There are going to be grant funds at the state level. I know there's been a lot of conversation about that. So I think this person would kind of be our point on applying for that pool of money at the state level to help do some of those other efforts. Um, we do have a smaller pool of funding than the county does.
Right.
Um, but that's kind of, and we have met with, I think, some other people who are working in that recovery, uh, ready community space. Yes, Karen, uh, she's on board. This is a appropriate use of the funds. But, but we would seek additional grant funding. Um, possibly to continue paying for this position going forward and also to, to supplement those other efforts. Um, this will obviously be about connecting a lot of resources, uh, for the individuals that come in. Uh, police did request three additional officers. Um, we are recommending that we defer that, um, until a, a mid-year budget amendment. Uh, number one, provided that it, uh, works out the way we hope by freeing up their tech position to go back to patrol, that frees that one up. But once they are fully staffed or are able to get fully staffed, we will revisit this request. So we'll bring it back to you at that time, once they're able to get fully funded. So kind of thought we would see how these, uh, salary adjustments, where they get us to, how quickly we're able to get fully staffed and, uh, bring that back in a mid-year amendment. Any questions on personnel? Uh, capital expenditures, just kind of want to go over, most of these are carry forward, uh, but there were some smaller capital requests we were able to include in the budget this year. Uh, we already touched on the city hall renovation. The balance of that money is 10,012,857. So that is in the capital projects fund, uh, for that amount. However, once we get through this budget cycle and get a fiscal agent on board, we will immediately begin talking about long-term financing options. See what council has an appetite to do, uh, based on the mayor and finance committee's recommendations and working with a fiscal agent who can help us navigate that along with any other uh, long-term capital projects that could be on the horizon. So it is in the budget because council did approve the, uh, contract to move forward. So we needed to have that in there, but we will be looking at, uh, additional ways to finance that project in addition to the tax credits, um, that we hope to receive from the state. And I think Devin, it'd probably be okay to share on that. We had a little bit of news on the tax credits and we do not have to do the slate roof, correct? There were some, I think, some tweaks that maybe will have to be made, but the 400, 500,000 dollar slate roof was not required uh, to, to get those tax credits. So we did get that little bit of news. Again, we won't know until June what our final allotment of any tax credits are, but they had to let us know by April 30th what changes we might need to make to the plans, uh, to qualify for those credits. So just a little update there. Uh, Cardinal Drive, uh, we recently accepted the additional funding from the state for the construction portion. Um, bids have been opened and the state and our engineers are reviewing those bids. So hopefully within the next week or two, uh, we'll get the blessing, the notice to proceed from the state and we'll be asking council to, um, award a construction contract on Cardinal Drive so that we can hopefully get the bulk of that work done before school starts. Um, it'll probably run over a little bit, but our goal is to get as much done as possible. So this is carrying over our portion of that in the capital projects fund. Uh, the South US 25 sewer line project, the 7.977 million, that's just the remaining balance of that project. The majority of that is funded by the KIA loan, uh, with a little bit of contribution from the city, the county, LF UCG, and we are using the ARPA funds to cover our portion of that. Uh, enterprise fleet management, we have finally been able to start making some movement on replacing vehicles. It's been, uh, a long time coming. It was a hard road after the pandemic, but, uh, in addition to all the vehicles that council's already approved individually since the fall, uh, the engineers requesting to replace the Escape with a RAV4 because they've had a lot of trouble out of the Escape. And then, uh, fire would like to replace two Chevy Tahu's. And as mentioned, all other vehicle leases were previously approved by council. Oh, yes. Uh, business park, sorry, that's just kind of a, when we did the lanes run business park phase two expansion, there was $525,000 set aside for gas line installations. But we don't actually install the gas lines until the lots are purchased and they're needed. So it's a placeholder. Um, half of that is our expense, which we've already transferred to the business park fund. Half of that would be at the county's expense when and if the gas lines get installed. Um, I'm sure at some point I can talk to Eddie and Jack about how long I have to keep carrying that over, but that was, uh, part of the project and it, it's not completed at the time of the project. So we just keep carrying it. Yes.
At the last meeting, we talked about 410,000 dollars for South Broadway. Is that a capital expenditure?
You'll see that in here. I don't have it under capital. I've got it under a, a maintenance, but I've got it when we talk about stormwater here in a minute, but it is in there.
Okay.
So. This was kind of just the big capital projects, the carry forward multi-year, but I, I guess what I call the multi-year. We use the Fund 70, when you look in the budget and you see Fund 70 capital projects fund, we use that typically for capital projects that cross fiscal years that are multi-year. Uh, something like that. Obviously we'll hope that will be completed within a year. So it's just in the regular stormwater budget. So now we'll talk about some of our smaller, uh, capital projects that were requested. Police, the 79,400 includes 20,000 to replace new furniture that's broken in patrol and some other areas of the building. Um, they've been doing some renovations in patrol, uh, to try to get, that we approved in this year's budget. So this would replace some furniture. And MDT lease, um, we've been buying refurbished MDTs for a long time. Uh, that was one of the things that when we talked about the tech position and that going away, what's one of the things they did. There was a lot of troubleshooting on our old MDTs, getting them to work with the printers, uh, because we never bought new. We always bought refurbished. Uh, so it was a lot of time. So they're requesting, much like we do with our vehicles, to do our MDTs on a lease. Uh, we pay so much per month for the use of them. Uh, it'll be a five-year lease. That'll come back to council for approval, um, in the new fiscal year. So they're requesting that we do that so that every five years they can get new MDTs. Fire of the 250,800, 212,800 is a fire gear replacement. Fire gear has a useful life of 10 years. So the second, the backup gear is about to hit that 10-year life. So we'll buy new gear. The current frontline gear will go to the backup because of course if they respond to a fire, come back and have to respond before they can get the gear washed, they have to wear their backup. So, uh, 10-year useful life on that. Station three kitchen remodel, 16,000. Um, they have cabinets broken, uh, doors falling off. Just, uh, it's all original to the building, so in need of repair. And the bathroom shower remodel, 7,000. Uh, in addition, they've requested a hazmat trailer for 15,000. However, they have a couple of trailers they're hoping to surplus and sell that they think will cover that full cost. But obviously until we know that, we're including it in the budget. So hopefully we'll have enough surplus sale revenue to cover the purchase of that. Public works, uh, we funded two items that were deferred from last year's budget. The bobcat for 75,000 and the wood chipper for 70,000. They did request a street sweeper. Um, and while it is needed, we did request that they, that we hold off on that until any decisions might be made regarding stormwater. Um, if we don't move forward with, uh, a stormwater utility fee implementation, that's something we will need to bring back to you. Um, so hopefully that's something within the next few months, we'll know where council wants to head on that. But just deferring it until any decisions are made on that. The city engineer, uh, we deferred two projects, the Yucco Inn parking lot, 40,000 and the demolition of the house on the corner of Royal Springs and Main. Uh, estimated at 90,000, it may not be that much, but. It may not be that much, but, uh, deferred those because they're not emergencies essential, um, for now. Parks and Recreation, we have funded 233,800 and deferred 90,650. And you'll see this when we get into the operating budget as well, that we received communication from the fiscal court that their budget committee was recommending these reductions. And we always try to fund equally, so if we make cuts, they make the same cuts and vice versa. Uh, if something happens when they pass their budget, that they pass something different than this, we'll, we will adjust, um, before first reading, but for now, we are doing this to match their budget committee recommendations for their budget. Dispatch, um, again, this is Fund 13 funded through the 911 fee, funded 6, 56,014 for a console upgrade and then 37,900 is a radio GPS project. So our radios have GPS capability. Um, if an officer or firefighter is down, uh, we can use this GPS to locate them. However, it is not, uh, set up, I think, integrated with our system, with our CAD system, with our radio, all of that. So this is to have the CAD system talk to the radio system, uh, to get that in place. Stormwater, uh, funded 490,500. This is your storm drain replacement, um, on Broadway, 410,500. Uh, Martin Luther King Stormwater Repair, 50,000. And a North Elkhorn Line Rehab, 30,000. Um, I discussed these with Eddie. Uh, the Martin Luther King Stormwater Repair is something we've kind of promised to a citizen who's expecting, uh, something to be done to alleviate their situation. The North Elkhorn Line Rehab, that's a situation very similar to Bourbon and Osborne where the pipe is failing and at risk of collapse, so we want to make sure we take care of that. Um, the, the column that says purchased in fiscal year 2023, the 45,000 is just a channel cleanout. It's a maintenance project. Uh, Eddie said that doesn't alleviate any funding by clean, any flooding by cleaning that out. So if he has funds remaining in this year's budget, he's going to try to go ahead and get that little maintenance project taken care of. Any questions on capital? And I believe I sent you all copies of the Parks and Rec budgets, so their capital requests are on the last page. And if you have any questions about which specific ones, uh, the fiscal court took out, I can go over those with you. So. All right, operating and maintenance expenditures, uh, just some new requests that I wanted to go over here. For the general government, uh, we requested 22,000 for the compensation study. We've talked about that at length. Um, so we want to do that and have our personnel ordinance, especially the grades, the ranges, everything looked at. Um, there's just some things that have been on there for a while, but honestly just don't make a whole lot of sense and we want, uh, some third-party advice to help clean that up. I did carryover money from the computer budget. Um, sometimes we have servers that fail and this was just a carryover of money we didn't spend this year, just for projects. Um, if there's any projects over 30,000, they will come to council for approval before we spend that money. Um, but they're for some small things. The, again, dispatch, the radio system maintenance contract begins January 2024. We will pay that on a monthly basis and the budget includes 251,634. It is a large contract. That means a full year of the contract is 500,000. And that is why I mentioned previously that within the next year or two, we may have to look at the 911 fee again to make sure it's covering, uh, our expenses. Stormwater operating expenditures are 462,177. That covers personnel, professional engineering, MS4 permit requirements, uh, infrastructure maintenance, such as where we camera the lines, um, repair any small things that we see, so just general maintenance. Uh, inter-local operating expenses, uh, increased by 269,114. And, uh, we'll, we'll look at those just so you can see as we go through this community service. Let's see what page. If you will go to page 17, uh, use the page numbers in the top right corner. Those are the ones I added versus the ones from the system, so. Page 17. Give everyone a second to get there. So this is actually the community services. Um, we did fund additional request of 67,240 for the community organizations. And you can see, um, an additional 5,000 to Elizabeth Village, uh, an additional 2,000 to transform Scott County, which I will make the quick caveat, we budgeted for that, but then, uh, they turned that down this year. They reapplied for 20, uh, so we only are recommending half of that. Uh, the American Red Cross is a 2,500 increase. Habitat for Humanity, a 3,500 increase. Ed Davis Learning, um, this account has always been here, but that is, um, the facility operations for the Ed Davis Learning Center. Even though that's a Parks and Rec facility, it is solely funded by the city. The county does not contribute to that budget. Uh, the Amen House requested a 20,000 increase. We gave them 10,000 additional. The museum, and, oh, I'm sorry, the gathering place, an additional 10,000. The museum, an additional 1,500. Uh, a new request this year, Isaiah House, 10,000. Um, Cadence Cause, 2,000. If you're not familiar with that local nonprofit, uh, their request indicated the money will be used to pay for funeral costs for low-income families for, who have children, uh, that pass away. And they said it will only be used for families located here in Georgetown inside city limits. Uh, the Nursing Home Ombudsman, 740. Let's see, uh, kept the airport funding the same. The Humane Society, uh, we did add that 20,000. Obviously they are building a new facility, uh, they're going to have a lot more operating costs. We kept Scott County United the same. And then we did put an additional 5,000 in Sister City so that we can work with a consultant, uh, to potentially start planning a trip, uh, to Japan. And if we have a delegation from Japan come over to visit, we typically have a reception or take them to Galvins. Um, the consultant is often used for planning purposes because they've been to Japan before. Uh, they also have interpret, uh, interpretive services. But if we do take a delegation to Japan, I just always want to make it clear that everybody pays their own way or you get a corporate sponsor. Uh, the city does not pay for anyone to travel to Japan. Um, we might buy gifts, uh, for, uh, for you all to take to the mayor of, uh, Tohara, but we do not pay for the travel expenses for council members or the mayor or anyone else to go. Uh, Inter Locals, Department 520, we'll just kind of keep going down. You can see ambulance, um, it's actually a reduction on the budget for this year from 3,124 to 3,900. And electrical inspection from 203,280 to 203,160. Animal shelter, 239,256 to 277,064. For the new council members' benefit, I just want to talk about animal shelter for a second. It is not a complete 50/50 split. Um, the county pays for the director and I believe two employees, we pay for two employees. So they pay a little bit more than we do in the personnel cost and then any operating cost, we do split 50/50. So that's the only one that's a little different than the other inter-locals that we don't just split completely down the middle. Um, the building permits and code enforcement, that is just where we write the county a check for their portion of the revenue. Uh, DES is EMA, so that's from 145,930 to 211,055. Uh, flipping over to page 19, planning and zoning, uh, from 546 to 609. Revenue commission, 340 to 400. That is an estimate on my part. I don't have a final budget from them that their commissioners have adopted yet. Um, they did a mid-year amendment, so their budget contribution this year is actually 380,000. Um, so I put an increase of 20,000 to cover any cost of living or other increased, um, operating expenditures. Parks and Recreation, uh, 1,255 last year. Their request for this year was 1,417,750. And as you see, we lowered that request by 85,065 to correspond to what the county, uh, was recommending for their budget. So, uh, just kind of wanted to go through those, um, because those are some big expenses. Uh, they're a little bit unique, um, because they're not related necessarily directly to the operations of city, city departments. Okay. This is just kind of a high-level overview of expenditures for other funds. Um, we have a lot of funds called special revenue funds. Um, we've got the Business Park Fund where we receive money from the sale of property in the business park. Uh, we track that whether it's phase one, which is completely city, phase two sales, um, are shared between city and county. But the inter-local agreement states that that money should stay in the Business Park Fund to fund any improvements needed. Uh, frequently when someone comes in and buys a lot, there's some work that needs to be done on the lot to get it ready. We use the funds from the land sales to do that. Uh, so you can see that in here. Um, we've talked about the 911 fund. Uh, we've got the alcohol fund. We have our alcohol, uh, beverage regulatory fees that go into the alcohol fund. They fund 25% of the city clerk's office as the ABC officer. And then they fund, I believe, it's in here as 19% of the police department, uh, wages. We have our MAP funds, which is what we use for paving roads. I've only budgeted what our new year allocation is because Eddie's going to spend it all this summer. So there's not going to be any left, no, joking. He's going to obviously work towards, uh, spending down our balance to pave roads, uh, throughout the season. Uh, we, this is one of those things we talk about in the big financial picture is to pave our roads every 20 years, we need to be spending about a million dollars a year. Um, we get about 613,000 from the state, that's what we spend. So we're, we're paving our roads a little bit less than every 20 years, which is the recommended. Um, so that's one of those things that, um, if we can generate additional revenue, we can hopefully someday start, start supplementing that money. Um, in addition, we've got our grant fund. Those are just carryover grant amounts. Uh, I just budget those for, uh, what they are, what's awarded. The ARPA money, I believe we have about 5.5 million left, um, anticipated. Obviously a big chunk of that is 1 and 1/2 million for the fire trucks because we knew they were going to take two or three years to build. Um, so anything that we budgeted in the ARPA fund, we're just carrying forward, uh, for the next year for the same purposes, so I didn't go into a high level of detail of that on here. And then, um, let's see. Stormwater fund, it's about 977,000, uh, I'm sorry. Yes, 952,000 for stormwater. And then cemetery fund. Cemetery is an inter-local. Um, at the end of the year, we tally up receipts, less expenses, whatever the difference is, the city and county, split that difference on the cemetery. So, uh, there was, I did not include the capital projects fund on this chart, um, because it's got 18 million dollars worth of projects in it and it distorts the pie chart, there would be nothing else left. But again, those are just carryforward projects, uh, from the current year. So I am on the last slide and this is just the general fund balance. And what you'll mostly see is an upward trend and I'll talk about the two dips. Uh, in 2014, our general fund balance was 10.6 million. Um, from 2014 to 2018, it grew to 21.3 million. The dip between 2018 and 2019, that 9 million dollar dip was our half of the radio system project and the Lanes Run Business Park Phase Two expansion. So our half of those two projects was 9 million. Uh, the county paid the other half. It was that council's choice to pay those with cash, so that's why you see, see the dip on that. Um, from 2019 to 2022, we have built the general fund balance up to 27.4 million. Uh, there's probably a couple of reasons for that. Number one is with COVID, with the pandemic, we received a lot of federal money. Uh, in addition to the ARPA money, we received CARES Act funding, which paid a large portion of our fire and police salaries, uh, during fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. Um, for fiscal year 21, we also budgeted our revenues extremely conservative because we did not know what the pandemic was going to do to our local economy. Our local economy stayed strong, extremely thankful for that, but we did budget conservatively. So because we budgeted our revenues conservatively, we kept our expenses down in those years as well. Um, now with 23 and 24, again, that is showing if we use, as currently budgeted, the 10 million dollars for City Hall. But as I've said a couple of times, and I'll repeat again, it would be my recommendation to finance part or all of City Hall through long-term financing. Uh, a 20-year bond on an asset that's supposed to last 30, 50, 75 years, um, is, is an okay thing to do, um, if that's something council so desires. So even though, yes, we show a dip, a large dip for 23 and 24, that is just based on the currently adopted budget and that is something that we will discuss, um, over the next few weeks and couple of months, how we want to address City Hall and any other capital project needs we have looming in the near future. So, and again, as mentioned before, um, it's not unusual to start the budget process with a deficit. We budget conservatively, um, on revenues. So if our revenues outperform budgets and also with vacancies, um, we have typically managed to not end the year at a deficit. Uh, I choose not to budget a vacancy rate. Uh, that's something that was done before I came here where for police, fire, dispatch, whatever the budget for salaries was, they would just take 3% off the top and cut it. I budget as if we're going to be fully staffed the whole year. Obviously if we're not fully staffed, July 1, there will be a time period of savings, so to speak, in the salary budgets, but, um, there, there are two ways of looking at that, but, um, I've always budgeted as if we were fully staffed and then if we see, and again, that's, that's my conservative nature with, uh, rather budget higher on expenses and lower on revenue and outperform, but I also want to make sure we're budgeting accurately so we can do the things that we need to do, so.
Ideally, haven't you said in the past, maybe just when I've asked you some questions, that to be responsible, the city should keep 16 to 17 million in reserve funds?
I think about six months' worth of operating, which on a, I believe a 30, I believe it's 35 million dollar budget that we're proposing, then yes, that would be about 17, 17 and 1/2 million that we should keep in reserves. Um, that's one of the things we need to address through Finance Committee and develop a policy that would be adopted by council. Um, but generally speaking, six months' worth of operating expenses is, is good practice.
I keep forgetting.
It's okay.
At the peak there, 2022, it looks like there's roughly about 27 million right now?
Yes.
And just to make sure that I understand here, it, it's, it's projected?
Yes.
You're projecting based on what we see today, that it could drop down?
It's about 15.
About 14 million?
It's about 15,86,000 and that's two things. So 27.4 is where we ended June 30, 2022. Like I said, approximately 10 million is currently budgeted for City Hall. And then the current budget, I believe, also had about 2 million deficit. So if we end this year in that full deficit, and, and I'll be able to bring that information to you, um, soon on that, but if we don't end the year in the full 2 million deficit, it'll, it'll end a little bit higher, but that's based on current 2023 budget. But that's based on current twenty-twenty-three budget. Because we did budget a deficit for fiscal year twenty-three and then the ten million dollars for City Hall.
And then the twenty-twenty-four projected?
It's about thirteen-point-seven, and that's showing the one-point-three-million deficit that's in this current proposed budget.
Okay. And granted, that's worst-case scenario.
That's worst-case scenario. And again, that's including City Hall being paid fully with cash, which I think, again, you know, with the Finance Committee and Mayor, we'll bring back a final recommendation to the full council on that. But I would recommend some long-term financing for that so that we don't fully exhaust our fund balance on one project. Any questions? And I will email you a copy of the PowerPoint with my notes. So you'll have the notes that I have below the slides for that. And also some information on the fund balance that I know the Finance Committee has. I'll make sure everybody else has that as well, where we've started our budget year versus where we've ended the budget year for the last ten years.
Well, I, for one, want to thank Stacy because, like, you know, to do all this is very good. That's why, you know, the smartest thing I did was keeping her around because that keeps me out of trouble.
It's a team effort. It's a team effort. I cannot take all the credit.
That's always a good thing, and we have good people here. But I personally, I know the council wants to thank you for your hard work. Because I'll tell you what, I sit in those meetings with you, sometime I'm going, uh, I go, I say, just keep me out of jail. That's all I want you to hear, okay? Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Next on the agenda, Human Resources is going to be, I think Devin's going to handle it. The first reading of the Personnel Order's Amendment Recovery Support Coordinator and the IT liaison, Fire Department Engineers, et cetera, sponsored by Willow Hamburg and Connie Tackett.
So this is kind of a cleanup. You'll notice that this only actually adds one person to the total personnel count. So that person being added, or that position being added, is the Recovery Support Coordinator at Grade Six for the Police Department. The other changes are kind of semantics. We figured that computer specialist was an outdated term for what our tech person's going to be doing. So we are going to call that Information Technology Liaison. And you'll notice the engineer positions are added to the Fire Department, but the count for firefighter EMTs are reduced by three. Based on the duties of this position, we determined, we being Megan, our HR Director, determined that it required an actual change in title based on the job duties and some other factors. So, and then the only other cleanup is that the Admin Assistant, and actually, this is not reflected in this, the, oh, yep, there it is. Admin Assistant in the Fire Department, you'll see it's now Administrative Assistant Two, and that's a Grade Six as opposed to a Grade Five. So that's kind of a, one of those corrections that I think we're going to see a lot more of that as we study, with the compensation study and determine how position should be graded, compensated, and provide for some kind of model that prevents compression among employees and things like that. So largely a cleanup, but adding that position.
An ordinance amending Section two dash one-one-one of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Personnel and Pay Classification. Summary. One, amend Section two dash one-one-one subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to: A, change the title of Computer Specialist to Information Technology Liaison. B, add one position of Recovery Support Coordinator to the Police Department. And three, and C, remove three positions of firefighter EMT, add three positions of engineer, and change Administrative Assistant, Grade Five, to Administrative Assistant, Two, Grade Six within the Fire Department. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, several built-in provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text and disordinances available for examination, City Clerk's Office, one-hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www georgetownky.gov. Introduced and publicly read the first time May eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Now we come to the point where we have council comments, and we'll start on the end. Mr. Allen?
Last week, I attended a meeting, it was an Inflation Reduction Act meeting, along with Councilwoman Hamburg. And in that meeting, they talked about opportunities for some potential funding for cities, for the state and for cities. And I think Kentucky did not opt in to some of that. I don't have all the facts, just kind of repeating what information I do have right now. But there is an opportunity for some cities to opt in. So if there's funding available in that bill, you know, we should be taking, being the forefront of trying to get some of that money. So I've discussed it with the city attorney slash CAO slash whatever. And I do think we need to be looking at those opportunities. So, and again, those could be some opportunities to kind of offset some of the deficit that we're looking at in this budget. Additionally, I attended a meeting with the National Guard, along with Councilwoman Wilkins Brent, and very, and the mayor was there as well, very informative meeting in terms of what they can do for our community during callouts and new protocols for requesting of the National Guard. So good meeting there with EMS as well. On the budget, it is disappointing to have a deficit. You would think that we would have a balanced budget. And I know that the revenue streams are a big part of it. So I think it's imperative that the community understands that we need the revenue streams to provide the services for all citizens, for all businesses, and for all residents. Because everybody enjoys the benefits of the services. We're ten down on police officers, and Chief Allgood was requesting three additional officers, and that was told, hold off. So it's just frustrating to be in a deficit like this. And I know that the mayor is talking about looking for gaps in the revenue streams, and we have to go after this pretty aggressively. We have to close the gaps in the revenue streams. In order to do that, I mean, we have to do that in order to give our citizens, our businesses, and our residents provide the services that everybody needs. We are a growing community, two percent a year, and we cannot continue to be in this mindset of kick the can down the road, like what's happened in the past. We weren't elected to do that. So I'm in a hundred percent favor with the mayor, and we'll look at it, and we'll do our due diligence to find that money and to balance that budget and provide the services for everybody. That's our job, so.
Do you have a name of the event? You attended the Inflation Reduction Act event?
It was KFCTS.
Okay, it was Kentucky. That's right.
Yeah, I think I sent you a copy of that information. So again, if there's opportunities for us to find, and to me, it doesn't matter, Republican, Democrat, whoever, that's not the case. That's not my concern. It's that we have to do what's right for all the citizens, and it's just a little frustrating.
Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to, you know, I agree with Councilman Allen's comments on the budget. I'm not going to sit here and repeat everything because I agree with everything. So, you know, I just think, you know, I will say that it is up to Finance Committee, then the council and the mayor to present a budget that will make sure that the citizens of Georgetown are taken care of, we provide services that are much needed. Right now, we do, you know, we do have that gap in revenue. And I feel confident going in that, you know, we'll close that gap. You know, we're already thinking of ways to do that. So, you know, again, Stacy, I want to commend you on the work you've put into it. I know that, you know, I know what the budget process is like, so it's a lot of hard work. So thank you, and thank the mayor for presenting it to us. Also, just a comment on the investment policy. Once you make those suggested changes, can you go ahead and just forward that to the full council so we can go ahead and be getting comments and questions back to you before the next?
Yeah.
You know, in addition to that, as far as, you know, that was just the investment policy tonight, then the conversation broke over into, you know, what we were looking to invest in. But, you know, it was always the Finance Committee and the mayor and Stacy's intent to bring anything to do with investing money, the city, the people's money. It was always our intent to bring that to council. So I just want to get that out there and make sure everyone knows that. We're going to do our due diligence on that. We're going to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that we make the safest investments possible. So thank you.
And I want to thank the Finance Committee, both for your comments and Stacy and the It's a difficult budget, but we are going to have a work session, and the public's invited to that, where we're going to be talking about revenue streams. And I hope a lot of people from the community will come out, and it'll be a collaborative effort because that's what the mayor likes, and that's what this council likes. So we want to hear all perspectives, and it is the people's money, and we want to be good stewards of it. I do want to commend the police, especially the one who put his car in front of oncoming traffic and was able to keep at cross. So many things with police and fire where they are putting their lives on the line, and we have difficult situations every day. And thank you for that. The, when is the construction part going to actually start on City Hall? And I just have a question, this may have been answered in the past, but we've had a project manager that we budgeted for, is that what it was called, the six hundred and some thousand dollars we spent?
That is the architect's fee.
That's the architect's fee. So do we have a construction manager that's going to oversee things?
Yes, and that's percentage-based, based on the total construction costs.
Okay. And so they will be overseeing?
Yes, they hold the contracts with the subcontractors. And the goal is, the goal is end of May to start.
End of May, okay.
Yep.
All right, good. And this Inflation Reduction Act meeting that we went to, sponsored by KFTC, was extremely interesting. There's a lot more to learn. And I got on the Kentucky League of Cities, and they have some things online that I think some of us should try to go to. So if it comes across your all's desk, I would be certainly willing to be a partner in learning more about that, especially if there's some things we can still do in City Hall to make it an environmentally friendly building with some of these funds. I think we still have an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, and Councilman Allen actually reached out about whether we have the opportunity to make City Hall a LEED certified building. And I've passed that along to the architects to see what that looks like, and they're looking into it for us.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say to you, your team, which includes Devin, Stacy, Finance Committee, what a great job. That wasn't an easy task at all. And everything that is coming, we're excited for with revenue streams. So I know it's going to, it's going to come and really help things out. So I want to say that Sanja and I attended the, or actually, we're on the Steering Committee for the Parks and Rec Master, Ten Year Master Plan. And she's got the email. I didn't print it off. But they are in the process of, with Brandsetter Carroll, doing a survey. So if you see one of the QR codes, or if you want to get online to Parks and Rec, they have that set up to where you can do the online survey. It would be very helpful, very beneficial to Parks and Rec and their plan to go through with that, so. And that's all I've got.
I don't have much, I don't have much because Alonso mentioned the meetings, Todd mentioned the meetings, so I had it all ready to say. But, so one thing, that, no, that's all right. That's fine with me. I want to ask about Harmony Ridge, Mr. Testament. You helped me and got, and Seth, everybody got in touch. Everybody is doing everything they're supposed to, but Anderson Community is not reaching back out and getting things done. And I told him and his wife, because I went out there Friday to look at the fence, and it's just not him, it's the neighbors too. And some of the neighbors were wondering why.
So there's still not a resolution?
No.
Okay. I will talk.
And I promised them I would see, you know, what's going on and maybe go back out there.
Yeah, Assistant Chief Johnson said he had a conversation with Anderson Communities and so.
And he did, and he sent the email and everything that he sent to them, but they have not responded like they were supposed to. So that needs to be taken care of, if we can get that taken care of. Please, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, but Anderson Community needs to do what they need to do to get this taken care of. And then the other thing I have is, Mr. Jeremy Emerson reached out to me to ask me to let the council know that there, he's sponsoring a listening, a community listening session this Thursday at the library from six to seven-thirty. And if anybody wants to come out for that, I guess, you know, the community wants to, you know, say what's on their mind and all this, concerns, but he would appreciate if anybody could show up from the council, mayor too, this Thursday at the Scott Kelly Public Library from six to seven-thirty. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Conway.
There we go. Just wanted to, as everybody has said, how much work has been involved in what Stacy and the mayor and the Finance Committee's done. I've been on the council for four years prior to this, and it's always a major, major task. And I appreciate everything you all do for that. It's almost an impossible task to make every, like you said, everybody wants more, needs more. You do what you can, and I hope it'll be accepted, appreciated, you know, for what we can do, you know? And I'm really looking forward to, after the budget's passed and continuing on these lines to get, what you say, Mayor, as many, you didn't say the word perks, but as many opportunities to, with grants and as much money as we can. So we have a fixed amount of money that we can count on to help us. So thank you very much. That's it.
Mr. Showalter?
Several things. Thank you, Stacy and Mayor, for taking the time to give us all the information. So thank you for that. Mayor, I don't want to steal any thunder that you might be getting ready to bring to us. I know we had, I think we had, you and Devin and I had a pretty, I think we had a pretty healthy discussion last week. And again, I don't want to get too far ahead, but, you know, thinking about some of the comments Mr. Allen made, as well as data, it speaks for itself. Again, I'm speaking for myself, not anybody else. I think we've got to continue to grow jobs, bring new industry in. We got, I think, the business park, this last phase of the business park has got to happen sooner rather than later. And two other things real fast. I know the previous administration, over the last year and a half to two years, was working on data for a, what do they call it? I just drew a blank, I'm sorry, on the.
Impact fee?
The.
Gross receipts.
Gross receipts tax, I apologize. I'd like to see if we can get some updated data. And I think several of us have been, over the past six, five or six, maybe seven months, have been talking to the Revenue Commission. I would personally like to ask if we can get numbers on how many businesses are registered within the Georgetown city limits? And out of that number, how many of those businesses, I'm not looking for the names of the businesses, because I know we're not, we got, because of confidentiality, but out of that total number of businesses registered within the city limits, how many of those businesses? of those businesses, and maybe just use the 2022 data since we're not done with the current year, paid net profit tax?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that. You know, whether it's, you know, maybe if we can get that information before July 1, if possible, or, you know, maybe it's a little later than that. But I, I wouldn't, personally, I'd like to know that. And then the second thing is, again, I don't want to jump too far ahead, but I know Mr. Stone's been talking about it for years. Several of us have been talking about it not near as long as that, but the developer I personally, I know, again, I think, I think it's fair to ask to have something back in writing to the entire council with a plan that if we decide to go that route, I think a, a fair date is January 1 of 2024. It's seven months to, to work on a plan, dot the i's, cross the t's, answer all the questions, whether or not it's legal. I'd like to see it. And hopefully, we can see that plan, and then this council can decide if that's the path we're going to take moving forward.
Well, we're going to do all, like I said, and as I mentioned before, we're going to do all we can to make sure you all have all the information that is needed to make a decision. And like I said, we're going to be very aggressive.
Okay.
And aggressive means that we have to get information that you all are going to need because, again, you know, the writing's on the wall. We either do something about it now, or we're going to suffer down the road. And, and I think we're tired of suffering because our people deserve better. So let's do what's best for people, and then I think in the end, it'll work out. So is there any, no other business to bring to this council? Nope?
One other comment. In terms of that compensation study, can we check to see if fiscal court could benefit from a compensation study as well? And if so?
They did one already. They did one just a couple of years ago, actually.
Never mind, I'm trying to save a dollar.
Sorry. I like where your head is, but they, they did that when they hired their new HR Director.
Once again, he's, once again, he's behind, eight ball. Okay. Again, thank you all so much, and this meeting is now adjourned. Hey, not too bad. Not too bad.